Welcome to the May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four work session. We have a couple of things on the work session, council priorities. I'm wondering, did you? That's not it. Can? You want to send that down to them when you're through? Is that the dates?
Yes.
Yeah.
Checks. Thank you.
Let's talk about the mileage logs first. Would you like to explain what that is, please?
So as everyone knows, we are in an audit right now. It is from twenty twenty to twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two. That being said, we have quite a few city staff that have gas cards between the police department, public works, code enforcement, our parks director, like a lot of floating things. We've realized we're not really tracking things how we really could be. So we're gonna start mileage logs, June first. All city staff that drive home a city vehicle will be tracking them. Not drive home, just drive a city vehicle in general. They will all have one. So let me know if you have any questions. We pulled one from the state auditor's website. Pretty basic, pretty simple. I think most municipalities require them, so.
This is a manual, manual log they just keep?
Big old spreadsheet. They just keep it in their rig above their visor. No. I think we're just kind of keeping track of how much they're driving or how much, you know, it compares to how much gas they're using or.
Well, it's an alternative to hanging on to every single receipt that you use with that.
It has been challenging to get receipts for gas. We constantly are facing that.
Get in and put down the mileage and then at the end of the day, put down the mileage. You know, it just seems like a simpler thing to do than gathering month, a month's worth of receipts to show what you spent the, you know, what was spent on the gas card.
Yeah, and if, if a, you know, a public works gets called in for on-call, they are just gonna log that. If officer has to go to the jail one day, they're gonna log that, like, just keeps everyone accountable.
I've just never worked anywhere that, that I drove a company vehicle that I didn't have to keep a log, so I.
My work's different. We don't keep a log.
Do you have a gas card?
Do you have a tracking?
You have to turn in the receipts?
No.
You don't? Oh, that's amazing.
Well, with the gas card, that can be set up with an account and that's all done automatically, right?
Are you driving a company vehicle?
Well, he drives a truck. That's what I know.
Yes, but when you have, you know, six to ten staff members that have a gas card, it's hard to track if they're not turning in receipts, you know? We're trying to make sure that we're.
Are they sharing vehicles or does each have their own?
Each has their own.
Well, that's, that's a, that's a database, right? Each card is unique. It's a query to figure out which, which gas purchases went to which car, to which person.
Right.
So it seems to me that, that, if you're trying to figure out who's doing what, or rather, how the gas is being spent, you know, that's easily traceable. The mileage is a separate issue if you want to see how much is spent each day or week or whatever to generate that gas usage.
Yeah.
What is, what is the state requiring?
Um, they're not requiring anything yet. We just wanna let them know that we're doing our due diligence to watch things.
Okay.
They don't love how many cards that we have floating around.
Good.
So far.
Okay. The next thing is the mid-year council retreat. Doug has put, Doug Ma has sent over a list of dates and times that he would like and is available. And Jason's got the list right now, so then take a look at it and see what you think. Jan thought a Thursday evening from five to seven would be, would be good.
Yeah, I didn't know if that works for everyone. I just feel like it's hard to lock everyone down on a Saturday, so I thought people might prefer a Thursday night to just do like a two or three hour quick session. I don't know.
Yeah, evening, evening. We're, we're started the daytime.
Of course, I don't feel that way, but then that's all right. I'm only one, you know, but I, I don't like night meetings if I don't have to have them, so. But that's okay. I don't care. That's fine.
I kind of agree with Linda on that, that point. I think it's more productive and certainly I'm more active at one o'clock than I am at.
Well, I mean, if you guys want everybody there, then.
Well, that's the thing. I just don't know, are we gonna have the same people? Are we gonna have the fire department and the
We haven't done that far.
police chief and all those people.
We're trying to just find a date that works for y'all first.
Okay, okay. All right, okay.
Well, yeah, I mean, with my work schedule, I, there's no way daytime would work.
Right.
Not during the week? No, I know that.
During the week, no, yeah.
So are you gonna send out that in a?
Is that what you'd like me to do?
I would.
Okay.
Yeah, in an email and then we can put down what we refer in a Google. What is it? Google Calendar or something maybe?
Like a poll?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be good.
I will make that happen.
This far out, I'm flexible.
Okay.
Why don't we do, go to reports? Cause I don't think we want to talk about any council. Unless someone's got something they want to talk about, a council priority.
Where was the mayor?
He's in California. Anybody have anything they want to talk about? Council prior? No? Okay, so let's move to reports. Do we have a report from the chamber? I didn't get one. I don't, I don't get it. Or Economic Development Council, steady, we had a steady meeting on on the seventeenth and it was really good. It was out at Lacy Makers Space. And if, if you've ever, if you've been there, it's really, oh, it's great. It is fabulous in fact. They do three D renderings. They do, they can make all kinds of three D objects. They have, it's fifty dollars a month for a membership. And there's a woodworking place and a sewing room and this three D rendering. There's a metal shop. Yeah, it's all, it's at Saint Martin's College and it's a nonprofit, so it's really, really interesting. If you just go there to get a tour, have a tour, you know, it's just, it's really something.
What is it called again?
Lacy Makers.
Makers.
Space. Okay. I brought a, you want to give that to Jeff? I brought a survey that the Experience Olympian Beyond put out. You and Jason haven't seen it. And the numbers of visitors that we had in Tenino from January through March was, what, about seventy-two hundred people. The average stay was three days, they said, I think something like that, you know, yeah. It's, it's interesting. They'll be getting those to us every quarter. So.
And do they, they show us how many are lumber truck or logging truck drivers?
No, no, no. This is people that stayed.
Okay.
Went to businesses and visited the park and this, this is not people that just drove through. We have, who have way more than that. We have that many in a day. Okay, South Thurston Fire. Do we have a fireperson here? All right.
My name's Andrew Mo. I'm with South Thurston Fire since twenty fourteen as a volunteer. And recently, well, three years now, I've been in a career position as a full-time. Currently the B shift lead for, for B shift, so Chief Jaffran has asked me to speak. So as for April, we had nineteen in district calls. And then for May, we have twenty-two calls today.
Is he's microphone on?
Sorry. Do you want me to start over?
That's better, yeah, because it, it can't be recorded unless you.
Okay. So yeah, my name is Andrew Mo. I'm with South Thurston Fire. I'm the B shift lead. I've been with them since about twenty fourteen as a volunteer. And for the past year, I've been as a full-time firefighter. For April nineteenth, we've had nineteen in district calls. And for May twenty-second, we've had twenty-two calls to date. Sorry. For May, we've had twenty-two calls to date. The department, we're still working, me and my colleagues are still working on doing pre-incident fire planning on the city and that's been moving along. We do have a set date for that to be done by the end of the year.
What is that now? What is it?
Pre-incident planning. So it's where we're going to different businesses
Oh, good.
within the city and outside the city, within our fire protection district and making sure that, you know, going there, logging like where electrical shut-offs are, solar panels, things like that, so that it improves responder safety when we get on scene and we have better action plans. So, and then Chief Jaffran's still working on the city with inspections and he'll have more to come when that, when that moves closer. And then the last thing is the department is still working on land allocation for the new station.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Where am I here? Library's not here. Museum's not here. Tenino Community Service Center is not here.
If I may speak with the library, I
Okay.
I spoke with Linda McKinney this afternoon, dropped in. They're looking at putting on the new siding, which I guess is a joint venture between Timberland Regional Library and our own city, city people. And I guess there's a mural that's gonna be painted on the parking lot side, so I
Yeah.
helped out with some suggestions on what they should side it with. I don't know what the plans are. But she's looking forward to having that spiffed up. The inside's been remodeled and the outside is, is ready for that.
Yeah, we're excited about that. I'm on the, well, I resumed my time on the arch commission and we, we toured it with, Joyce and I did with Jessica. And there's also a mural that's going to be painted down on the, on the concession stand at the baseball field. The one, the wall facing the, the path, the walk path.
And there's a commission, not proposal, a request for ideas from the Congress, I suppose.
Good. All right, thank you. Civil Service Commission, nothing. I have no report for the facade grant. Finance Committee, we have, we're meeting. When are we meeting?
June, I wanna say the twelfth, but I'm not sure.
I can see, I believe it's the twelfth. You're right. Yeah, no, the eleventh. We're meeting the eleventh, Tuesday, the eleventh. So we'll have a report that night. Planning Commission, okay?
Alrighty, good evening. My name's Adam Carney again. Okay, little update from the planning commission. So we didn't meet for just about a month and a half there, two months. SCJ, our planners were making up a presentation for us and so we got that the, the last time around. So basically where we're at as far as updating the comprehensive plan, the climate policy section is pretty much done. They're currently drafting it and that'll be ready to be looked at again and approved sometime in the early fall. They've identified some policy gaps that we could update and so that's been great to identify those things. They had a work group working on that. Then we followed up on the land capacity analysis that we had started looking at back in March. So again, this is because the legislature passed a bill in twenty twenty-one. We have to kind of look at what our land capacity is in the city and plan to increase our housing units by whatever amount that Thurston Regional Planning Council kind of hands down to us over the next approximately twenty-five years, twenty years we should be looking at. So Thurston Regional Planning Council reached out to us and said, hey, you need to look at approximately five hundred and twenty units over the next twenty years. And so basically what that would require is probably an increase of the, the urban growth area. So so we started looking at some different sites. As far as that goes, no decision has been made at this point. We're still kind of looking at some, looking at some places and seeing what TRPC will kind of allow as far as what we can look to put in the UGA. Let's see. And potentially some zoning changes as well. So there'll be a balance that'll be struck there between expansion of the UGA and probably some, some zoning changes within the city here proper. So that is it, unless there's any questions.
The, the question that always comes to my mind when we talk about planning for the future is water. Water rights, we're, we're at the limit, I understand. Any movement on?
I haven't heard anything and I was actually gonna ask you about that tonight, seeing what we're.
So when I spoke with Dan, the city planner, I guess when we had the West Tenino annexation and the development fell through due to gophers, we acquired quite a bit of water rights on that property and then when we couldn't develop it, the state stripped us of those rights. And I'd like to know where they went and can we get them back if we're expecting five hundred and twenty new units in our, our new urban growth area in the city? So that's just an outstanding question for me and I've, I've not heard anybody address it. No, no water, no growth, right?
Sure.
So if they want us to grow, we're not in charge of, of water rights. Somebody's gotta, gotta provide that.
Yeah. No, it's a good question. I'm, I'm interested in that too. So we'll look into it. Okay.
And, and one last thing. You said that the, what was that? The, the environmental section of this is gonna be due. Are, are we gonna be approving this piecemeal or do we approve the entire comprehensive plan, what is done at the end? What's the, the plan for that? Do we get?
I don't know the, I don't know the, I don't know if I know the answer to that one specifically. From what I understand, there's gonna be a draft that'll be approved sometime in the fall of specifically that climate policy section. And then I believe at the end of the year, there will be something for the comp.
I think it has to be in by December thirty-first.
Yeah.
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 Right, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee.
We are meeting this Thursday.
Public Works Committee.
I think our meeting is.
Also June eleventh, I believe.
June eleventh, yeah. At seven in the morning.
Okay, so, because, okay.
And then, and then finances at ten.
It's fine.
And then council meeting.
Chief of Police not here. Hi there. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you for having me. I'm Officer McCullin with the Tenino Police Department. I'm the public information officer for our department and Chief Auditor has asked me to come and give an update on what we're doing. Major update is that, as you guys may have heard, the city of Tenino, the Tenino School District and multiple businesses within the city were victims of property damage, of a property damage spree that occurred on two separate days, about a week apart from each other. The damage was mostly graffiti. One of the businesses, however, had their glass door broken with a large rock. No, no entry was made into the business, which we find odd, but it was damaged. The aggregate total cost to repair damages reached well over twenty thousand dollars with one business being, I'm not good with percentages, being at fourteen thousand five hundred dollars just for their business to repair the graffiti. So some people look at graffiti and think, well, what's the big deal? Just a little bit of acetone will wipe it off, which was the case with Edward Jones cause it got on glass and it's a lot, it's significantly easier to clean. But getting it on siding, getting, especially in Washington State, the rain can soak the paint in and it's much more difficult to get it out. And it's, and it causes businesses, it costs the city, it costs the school district. Forgive me. And it costs the, it costs businesses, the city and the school district money that we would rather put to other projects. However, after police investigation and with tremendous help from the community, the suspect was identified, taken into custody. He was booked into the Thurston County Jail for malicious mischief in the first degree, which is Washington State's codified property damage law and it's a class B felony. Thurston County Prosecutor's Office then reviewed it. They reviewed the case and they filed for felony level malicious mischief. And of course, the San Antonio Police Department would like to thank everyone involved for their help with the suspect's identification. Couldn't have done it without them. The suspect left behind some things at the crime scene that led us to check this and it was, it was a lot of, it was a lot of investigation and every single officer and the chief of police had their hand in the investigation and it was, it was a great show of of community support, community involvement. We would like to thank them for that. In other news, the Tenino Police Department, we're also still trying our best to make the roads a safer place. I was, I'm a DUI guy. I like doing drug and alcohol impairment, drug enforcement. And we're finding that I, I, in the last few work sets that I've worked, I've arrested at least one person that had illicit narcotics, controlled substance on their person. So it's still very prevalent and I'm seeing a very large uptick in not alcohol DUI, but in drug DUI. We're going to more trainings on that. The outside agencies have invited us out to trainings to help detect for drug impairment. We're also getting in touch with the Target Zero from Washington State Patrol where they provide us funds so one of our officers can go out on a regular scheduled day off and will work the road and will do traffic enforcement specifically looking for DUIs so that way our families and our business partners and everyone that comes through the city is safe. The other one is speed enforcement. I know that the main thoroughfares being Park Avenue, Central Avenue, Sussex, Lincoln and Garfield all have a lot of complaints of speeders. We try our best. It's, on the narrow streets, it's hard to get into a position where they don't quite see you until it's too late. But in, we did a speed enforcement at the mayor's request a few weeks ago. I myself only got two people speeding, one of them on Park Avenue and the other one was on Garfield. And for those two, those speeds were in excess of ten miles an hour. So it's twenty-five miles an hour there, so they were going thirty-five or more. So still a concern. We're still gonna hit, we're still gonna conduct speed enforcement throughout, especially in the school zones. And that is it for us. Do we have any questions?
Well, I, I just wanted to have a comment. I am so tickled about the inspections that have been going on with the State Patrol. The, the reduction in semis going through here is amazing. I cannot believe it. It's just wonderful. They really have cut down on coming through here because they're afraid they're gonna be inspected.
Right, and they, they usually do. We have a really good communication. We have a good, really good relationship with the commercial vehicle officers that come through the State Patrol. And they're putting, I think the State Patrol's putting through about two academies a year now. I might be wrong on that, but two academies a year for commercial vehicle officers and they always come out here, the lieutenant, one of the lieutenants is always coming and help, using our facilities for reports, so we have a really good relationship with them.
It's, it, it's fabulous to sit in the shop and not see truck after truck after truck after truck.
And not have your windows rattle.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Alec. Let's see. Public Works, should they have anything from?
I don't have an official report, but the boys have been working overtime on the pool. It's looking fantastic. We are still scheduled to open on the twenty-second, so very exciting. And a huge shout out to them. They got all the flags up and all the new hanging baskets that the chamber went halves on with the city and they look lovely. Downtown's looking great, so.
Good, thank you. Colder enforcement, you don't have anything? And park specialists, nothing. City Attorney, clerk treasure.
I don't have much to report either. I'm just deep in an audit, having meetings with them every day. They're fantastic and they're so patient with us and we're getting through it. So an email went out to all of you today inviting you to the entrance meeting, which is on Thursday. It's essentially just like, here's what we're doing. There's a letter in the packet that we need to sign for them as well. If anyone's attending, please let me know because we have to make sure we don't have a quorum. It's not mandatory. It's just something they like us to let the council know that they're welcome to.
They want a quorum there?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
They don't want a quorum. I mean, then we have to treat it like a public meeting.
It's like a, it's a Zoom meeting.
It's just a Teams meeting, yes. It's just really informal.
It's on Thursday, Tuesday morning at nine, is it? Yeah.
Yeah. And it's essentially like, hi, we're the auditors. Here's what we're gonna do. Here's what we're gonna look into. I believe there's six or eight categories that they're really gonna focus on. Utilities, court, payroll, police, the police department's inventory or, not inventory, what's the word? Evidence inventory, yes. So certain categories like that, they'll let us know, but we'll of course keep you all informed here.
Okay. Well, the mayor's not here, so no report from him. Be that.
Yeah, this Saturday down here at the Creative Market. Starting at ten AM, they're having a, it's called Rockin' Tenino. So music, food and craft booths.
On the eighth?
Yeah, this, this coming Sa, oh wait, no.
No.
The following Saturday.
The eighth, June eighth.
Yeah.
Good. Is that it?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, Solid Waste Advisory Committee?
No, it's another week or week and a half. Okay.
TCOM nine one one, Tenino School Board.
Yeah. Let me bring my notes here. So graduation is next Friday at seven o'clock over at the stadium. And the valedictorian is gonna be Abigail Archibald and the salutatorian is Gavin Burke. And then their last prom is this Friday or Saturday too.
Yeah.
And then sports wise, so the last meeting I failed, I didn't know golf had state for boys already in the spring when they had.
Really?
Yeah, they had it in the fall, but their state tournament is in the spring.
Oh.
So that was confusing to me, but, so David DeLair made it for Tenino and he placed twentieth. And then Tenino baseball team took third at states.
I love it.
Yeah.
Something interesting, it's so funny. At one of the prongs this, last year, David DeLair and Gavin Burke decided not to go to the prom. They went golfing instead. I thought that was very funny.
She actually wore also took second from the state line.
Yes, she did.
He.
He.
Or he, sorry, he.
Okay, great. TRPC, no report cause he's not here. TPB, no report, he's not here. No commissioner here and the legislature doesn't start till January, so. Okay, well, I guess we will take a half hour break. We're too quick. Unless there's anything else you guys want to talk about? Anything you can think of for the work session? Okay. I wish there was a way to say, all right, we'll start the meeting now if we can.
I know.
I know.
It's a bummer, huh?
Yeah, it's a bummer. How are you, Jennifer?
Good, thank you.
Good. Good to see you. Are you gonna make a public comment? The thing out at the ranch did quite well.
Our open house, it was fantastic.
That's great.
We, we have our hamburgers. So next year, I told everybody twice as many and please order in advance. We'll get, or trust me, next year. But it was great. Weather cooperated and had a really great turnout. It's been a long time since we hosted an event like that for ranch, so it was really great to see them.
I wasn't able to be there. I had someone else to be, but that, I heard that it was fabulous.
Yeah, yeah, but it wasn't, it wasn't good enough.
Yeah, they said it was.
It'll be, it'll be an annual event now.
Good, good. Maybe I'll be there next year. I'd like to. Good. Good.
John, how are you? Same way?
I don't know what's going on, I wonder if he's alright, you have a phone number for him and you should call him.
I don't.
I don't either. Oh, wait a minute, yes, I do, too. Maybe I do.
You guys were gonna do the um. What? Jen and Maria.
But it goes like a routine, just regular.
Captain, oh, no, the, the coach, and the city ordinances, or, not the ordinances, the.
The tickets?
That you were gonna review them all, 'cause some of them are so old and outdated.
Yeah.
Had you, had a chance to work on them?
No. We don't even have to, but we threw someone, a council meeting, and then, so it wasn't really talked about much.
Yeah, we did some of them.
What was that, fireworks, we talked about the fireworks, and then nobody wanted to do anything with that, yeah.
I still wanna ban them completely, I still want to.
That.
The rule was about tolling from the hours of them and whatnot.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That was just, yeah.
No, if you notice anything you want us to pick out first, we're happy to.
I'm gonna save you all.
Yeah, let me talk to Maria and see what she wants us to.
I do have a number for him.
Okay.
You wanna call him? I don't wanna. Three six zero, two five nine.
You're the mayor from Tenino, I'm the caller.
Three six zero, two five nine, one seven zero four.
Three six zero, two five nine. Two five nine.
One seven zero four.
Seven zero four.
I almost gave the John Millard.
I don't wonder.
That would've been awkward.
Yes, well, I've got John Millard and John O'Callaghan right together on my contacts, and you can't get rid of contacts, you know?
Yes, you can.
Cannot, well, I can't.
I love to. I love to love everything for my life.
I can delete them all from my.
I don't think I can.
I just wanted to check in on you.
And that would be, you know, if you're really, it's, it's, it's at seven o'clock in the morning, you're sleeping at six.
Uh, you were not at council, it's very unlike you.
That would be uh something we can, we can let up, kind of give us a little.
It's seven.
Or, or have him, I mean, it could be for the city council, it could be for fun.
Okay. We'll see that. Because why would I do wrong? I'm just checking on you, why would I do wrong?
He forgot us.
He goes, well, what time is it?
Oh.
It's seven, I'll be there, I can be there in fifteen minutes.
Oh, I, I had a feeling he, he forgot.
I, I had a feeling he forgot.
I just had a feeling he forgot, yeah, he did.
One or the other, he said, what time is it, make sure you think.
Yeah. Yeah.
I know, I was sitting there reading, and my sister called me, says, oh god, I have to go to a meeting, I'll call you when I get home.
Oh, you can delete it, can I, is that gonna delete him? I, I, I'm not John.
Don't accidentally call somebody now.
No, George Nelson, I had his number in here. No, and I think myself, you know, I, I just wanna get his name off there.
Well, you should bring it up and then just.
I think I did, just a minute. No, and it went, it took out part of his name.
You did. Go to, go to the name.
I just, I did.
And then you, and then you edit it.
Delete, right?
Yeah, you can do it that way, maybe. Delete this contact.
No, it says conversation.
Oh, you're in, you're in Messenger, she don't wanna be there.
No, I'm not, was I, no?
Yes, you are.
Well, I wasn't, I was not.
Yes, you were.
But I, I clicked on the phone, so I don't know why you did that, there's my phone.
So, go back to your phone, okay, there's your contacts, go to your, go to the name you wanna delete.
Yeah, okay. It's still there, okay. Now click on it?
You should be able to.
Edit, edit, to edit here, just a second, right?
Edit, and it.
No, no, it's not letting me.
You have canceled down there.
Where?
You did. Go back.
No, that's, it canceled doing it, or whatever, that's not, that's not cancel, canceling that number.
So, this is more, um, you see, she doesn't.
Delete, okay.
There you go, I was gonna say.
Move to trash.
There you go. He should be gone.
Okay.
And anybody else you wanna take out, you can do it that way.
It's okay.
I was gonna say, I know I did a bunch on my brother's phone, because he didn't know how to do it.
Well, I, you know, this uh, Marge Wolf, that's Marge Wolf, I wanna get, I wanna, yeah, poor Marge. Well, I, why won't it let me?
What, what are you trying to do? You wanted to delete her?
I wanna delete it, yeah, she's not, she's no longer with us.
So, you bring her up?
Well, I did, there she is.
Yeah, but you have, and then.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, I know what I have to do, wait a minute, I gotta go back to contacts again.
Yes.
Now, Marge. Let's try this again.
Put your phone in your contacts, and then you bring her up.
Okay, I'm gonna retype it in and see. Still, it's not.
I mean, as it was, it was, it was too.
It was down here last time.
I know, I know, weird, huh?
So, can you not?
Can't do it.
You can't edit it?
No. No, I can't edit it.
That is bizarre.
I'm, I'm gonna take it into the, I'll take it into Verizon and ask them to, oh, god, ask them to see if they can tell me.
That's, yours isn't an iPhone, no.
No, no.
I was gonna say, 'cause mine.
I have nothing but trouble, I had noth- I tried iPhone, had nothing but problems with it.
Well, you know, if you get used to an Android, then you'd be like an Android, if you get used to an iPhone, then you wanna.
I suppose you're right.
I agree, when you don't have an iPhone and everyone else has iPhones, they don't like what you're chatting to.
Nope.
They don't.
That's why we have to do Facebook Messenger, my cousin and my brother and I, 'cause my cousin doesn't have an iPhone.
Yeah, see, doesn't work great.
Yeah.
Well, I, I have an Android, I have Messenger on it.
No, yeah, Messenger's fine, but it's a group text, if you're with iPhone people, then you're in trouble.
When you're just texting iPhone to Android, and it's a group, and multiple people don't have, you know, they have different ones. Sometimes the Android, I'll blame Android, 'cause I have iPhone, sometimes the Android doesn't wanna take that text, so.
Oh, yeah, right. Maybe it's the person that doesn't wanna text from ya. Have you ever thought of that, Jason?
Everyone wants a text from me.
I used to do it so much, like, I use it to be with my kids most of the time, and I Facebooked a hack, and I can't get back in it.
I do it, too. I use Messenger, and I text a lot, a lot. Really? They stole your whole Facebook, they stole it?
Yeah, they stole my s- identity.
And did you, did you?
Yeah, I tried, I woke up, I woke up in the morning, and I had like ten emails from Facebook that was like, are you trying to log in in New York? Are you trying to change your password? And I was like, no, like a hundred times, but it was too late.
Oh, no.
So, when I tried to log in, and I hit, like, I forgot my password, it sends it to some random email that's not my email, and it says that I, my account's been disabled, or temporarily locked out, it tells me all these different things, and there's no one you can call, there's nothing you can do. It's like, oh, my children's baby photos are on Facebook from two thousand five, never see those again, it's very depressing.
So, you have to just. Oh, no, they were only on my Facebook.
Well, I don't have the same phone I have back then, do I, no, I don't.
You don't save any of them? Oh, I do.
Well, when, when, when Joyce got a new phone co- phone, they wiped everything out, she has none of her old pictures and things.
Yeah, technology's a blessing and a curse.
Well, if you, if you back it up.
Yeah, I don't wanna back up Facebook.
Um, Jeff, would you sign that blue book things, please, so we can get that?
I save all my pictures that my daughter sends on Snapchat and Face, you know, I save them, there's a little box there.
Thank you.
That's so smugly lean.
So, they all, they all go to my photos.
I can't, I can't, I don't.
Well, if I have anything like that on, on my gallery, I put it on, thunder.
You do, too?
Yeah.
I might just never get it again, it's kinda nice not knowing what's happening in the world.
Well, that probably happened to I, I like keeping a stack of my relatives that live in Texas and different places, you know?
Yeah.
No, I just wear rose colored glasses, so everything's great over here.
My cousin has a sweatshirt that says, that says, and fine, we're fine, everything's fine.
My son changed his name. I mean, he still has the same name, but on Facebook he has a different name. So, then he had sent text message and said, this is my new name on Facebook.
Really?
Somebody stole his account.
Oh, they did?
Uh-huh, so he changed, he created a new account with a new name.
Wow.
Yeah.
So.
Nineteen minutes.
And there's multiple people that have done that, that I know of, because their account has been either hacked or stolen or duplicated.
Six thirty is the work session, and the meeting starts at seven thirty.
It's not hacked.
Early, it was very early.
They call it, they have another new for it now.
What's that?
If somebody gets into your account, they duplicate it to you.
Sorry, Jennifer, yeah, six thirty work session, seven thirty the meeting starts. I just said to Jennifer, Jen, it's just too bad that we can't just start the meeting when we're through with the work session, but we can't do that. 'Cause there are people that know it's seven thirty, so they'll.
Oh, I did see that for me, yes, you posted that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I did see that.
And, and, and I just do that periodically, um, just to um, let people know that if they get another request from me, don't accept it.
Don't accept that one.
Yeah. But whenever I get a, a request, like I got one from Maria, um, a lady I know in up north, and I got one from her the other day, and I knew she was already on my friends list, so I just hit delete. Or you can actually go in and report.
Here comes John. You didn't miss a thing, John.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you can, there's, there's an option there on it, when you see it, and, and kind of those little.
That was fascinating.
Those little dots.
That's what they about.
Yes, and you hit that, and you can report it to Facebook as, as a hack, or, and I always do that if I get the chance.
Hey, John, how you doing?
Set your own clock.
Day after tomorrow, it does feel weird.
It's not that, it's actually, it's just set the calendar, I don't think there's anything happening until Thursday.
Oh, gotcha, 'cause you don't, you didn't write city council meeting on your calendar, you mean? Oh, I have it written on mine. Every month I turn the page, I write city council meeting, and whatever other meetings I have or appointments. Yeah, it's the end of the month, you, you don't think of it as being, yeah.
I got vouchers signed tomorrow morning, I got a safety meeting Thursday, that's it. Well, I made it. Thank you. How about that?
Yeah, no, kinda light.
It, it was mighty, mighty short this time.
I need a maintenance man.
I don't need any kind of man. I have my daughter, I don't need a maintenance man, I have my daughter.
You know, I used, I have the faucet, it's dripping, my daughter says, well, call, call a plumber, I says, Denise, a plumber's not gonna come to Tenino and fix a drippy faucet. I used to always fix my own, I'd keep it underneath the sink.
It sounds like it. I know, but it sounds like it might need a new washer.
Exactly, that's all it needs.
Does the thing unscrew, so you can get.
It's always around my wife's birthday.
What am I trying to say?
But you have to get underneath the sink to turn off the water in order to change the washer.
You do, no, you don't, like, just don't turn the water on.
No, you have to take the faucets off, and that's where the, that's where the.
You're sure it's not in the actual spout?
No, it's not the spout, it's in the, the ones that you turn on and off.
But if you don't. Do you have, it, it, do they have bolts on the top of them?
Yeah, screws.
Yeah, I don't think you would need to uh turn the water off to do that.
Yeah.
I don't think so, if you don't turn the water on, when you unscrew it, you just lift that thing off, you shouldn't need to. Go ahead and try it, Elaine.
I'm not going to try that, because I'm quite sure you're wrong.
I don't know, I would have to try it, I would have to see it. Mine is.
Yeah, I have water going like.
I don't recommend neither of you touching faucets.
Yeah, my daughter says, well, just call a plumber.
No, just call your daughter to come and get down there and turn the water on.
Yeah.
Thank you. There you go, thanks.
Yeah, I'm just like.
I just signed all the checks, so I'm not gonna sign that.
A ringtone.
Oh, really?
Pulled away from the house for some reason. I see it's all vibration from the daily things.
Yes. Thank you.
Which we never used to know.
What's that? That not, is not for you, that is for the mayor. Oh, yeah, you took that.
Yes.
Uh, just the chief's, my lodge law, he went to a training, he wanted to do a town.
Oh, I guess I can.
Oh, I know, right, yeah.
You know, I could fix all these, except for.
Uh, California.
I'm like, I probably shouldn't be on the ladder.
Yeah, probably not.
And then I have the stuff to get on my, the house off for the moss. My daughter says, don't even think it.
Somebody gave me the number to a, a handy man at City Hall, they all have the city.
Oh.
Yeah, but if it's just to turn the water off in the sink, surely you've got somebody that can just get over the sink and turn the water off without paying a plumber a hundred and seventy-five dollars for the trip.
I know, yeah.
That's what they charge.
You're part of the front, you take front, and then.
Well, and then that's, that is such a, they're busy.
Oh, I know.
And, and they're, they're not gonna drive to the mail for such a little thing.
Yeah.
If they knew, they're gonna charge me so much. I know, I just got my truck back today, which been on the market for two weeks. And he didn't even do a couple of stuff he was supposed to, or was like.
That sucks.
Yeah.
Why does it take so long and then you get to it? Or you forget.
Well, I think he's, I think he's too busy. And like, he says, well, he says, the good news is you don't need new brakes.
Oh, you did?
'Cause I took it there because tomorrow I got my old change, who says, the brakes are in the yellow. You probably, you would get new ones on the front. And so, I took it to the mechanic, and he said, he pulled the wheels, and he says, you do not need brakes.
Oh, green works?
He says, the plumber's telling me on the lady's brakes, he says, you do not need brakes. He says, you might in a year, if you drive them a lot, but I don't drive my truck all the time.
Right.
I drive it like once a week, but.
Oh, you, no, 'cause they only have their, uh, their power.
I have two sisters and stuff, you know, they were good, so my brother, you know, one sister really loves to wear the, the little rounds.
Yeah.
Get your battery, pick around, and, she's a, she's a. It's easy for her to put them in her little bucket.
Yeah, right.
And she says, they just need for everyone, she get it going and shut the store.
How old was it?
Yeah. And so, I hold it for her, we have to load them like that.
Yeah, do they put them in boxes, or do you?
No, it's a great big pile, and you just back up to it and load your truck, um, and they charge forty dollars for a as much as I can put in, then they charge. And they charge forty dollars for a, as much as I can put in, then they charge forty dollars for it.
Oh, I see.
They make her a long, round, long, um, I think they're probably, you know, decorative timber. But they're, yeah, well, and some of them I think are probably dense posts, because some of them come down to a point and others are just cut off again. But what they cut off, they cut this long, and they're about that big around.
Oh, yeah.
She just takes her five gallon bucket out there and fills it up.
Yeah.
And brings it in and sets it in.
Yeah, it's like.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
And then she's left another one on the porch just in case she. Well, if she wakes up like at five in the morning, and every bucket in the house might be really low, then she could just step up and grab the bucket. Cause she doesn't burn it all, you know, and she lives in a really old house up at the end of.
My neat, right?
Yeah, on the past, yeah, but all that ends up for us. And that's a really old house, you don't really see it really.
Whoa, is it that?
Yeah.
Very catchy.
The kitchen and the bathroom is good, we've had a couple of times, you know, but.
Surprise he picked up that when she called.
So.
I like to think about when there was a lot of stuff out there, you know? How long you should live there?
Yeah, well, she lived there, and then her husband passed away. She might have listened to me for fifteen years, and then her husband passed away, and then she continued to live there.
Oh, okay.
And then she left, so she moved back to her house.
Huh? Yeah. I shouldn't know.
His kids dropped his place, so she moved back to her house, and that's where she is.
Did you hear from all the crazy messages? They're having a divorce. He was a former state councilor, and they sold their house here in Washington, right?
So.
Yeah.
We got done with it, right when she called it, it was finished up.
So it's been gone for a while because it's gonna be fine.
Wow, yeah, that takes what, three months?
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's too much. Yeah, do it. Yeah.
It looks great, you're so good.
I don't want to be married, but they adopted that boy.
I forgot my water.
You, you sure one up there too, Dan?
I, I think I've got.
I have these, yeah.
Ludes, those are the best. Oh, I love those ones.
I do too.
They're like candy.
But, but just.
Oh, I love those too.
I, I was gonna say, I have, I have those also.
I usually have these everywhere.
Because I can, why pressure medicine makes you calm.
Oh, yeah. Sometimes it's cause you're dry, other times, yeah.
Oh, in the freezer, huh? Where is that, oh, yeah?
So he didn't report on that.
No.
Oh, you're good.
Do you, uh, want me to read all these things?
All what things?
Well, are you gonna talk about the park plan?
God, I thought Jessica would be here.
I know, well, she's got a bum foot.
She does?
I'm sorry. Okay.
What did she do?
She rolled a log onto it, somehow she was having a log in it.
Did she, did she break it?
Yeah, it's fractured in multiple places.
Oh.
She's only been urgent here, she hasn't been to the real orthopedist quite yet, cause it was a holiday weekend.
Oh, no.
After on like Thursday, so.
Oh, no.
So what I want you to talk about is this one.
You wanna talk about, you want me to talk about that one? Okay.
Yes.
You already talked about the auditor table.
I just see you.
So Jason, went to the library, just tapped into the window, and she approached me and said that.
Yeah.
I can even look at my video.
I can read this, I can, I can read this, that's fine.
She's almost.
I, I just, I.
Yeah, cause only, cause I can't, uh, make their meetings when they happen anyway.
But, my, my truck was getting it up.
So I get notes from them, but.
From the mechanic, my sister just left his back, like, and they delivered it to my brother's house.
Yes, we consider. Did you?
That's where they got it from, so they delivered it back to, so I says, okay, you take the trucks home and then I'll follow you and then I'll bring you back to pick up your car.
You graduate next week.
My grad student at university next week.
Oh, yeah?
I was running back and forth to San Antonio today.
That's fun. That's what I do every day, like.
Plus the business school.
Yeah.
Anyway, so I, I, uh.
True. So what do I think of you every time?
So what have we talked about in this?
Guess who runs the.
I'm asking her.
Before I commit, find out a little bit more about what we're looking for, but if it works out, I'll, I'll take that off your.
It's essentially just, it's essentially adding a new trail, adding a new trail system, like for the new land we acquired, and then it's also.
Oh, yeah.
It was the ultimate.
Okay.
We'll do. Thank you.
You hand me another.
I could read the first and last line in it, so, yeah.
And Alex here, do we have any questions about that resolution?
Yeah, it was, it went underneath the desk. Close here.
Officer McClellan.
Oh, okay.
Weapon surplus, in case anybody has any questions. That's his girl here from, sorry, sorry. Like, I'm like your gate, my leg. Tripping, huh, sir?
You didn't, did you do the chicken on your blackstone? No.
And are you all ready for, um, Splash splash, isn't that Saturday?
Mm-hmm, yeah, pretty much.
Big chicken breasts. Break them down, uh, yeah. Classic baseball, break them down, put them in back in the series, so there's just two firsts.
I'm going to.
To where? Work in?
Mm-hmm. My grandson that's, they're working? Well, the other day I sent him a text message and I says, do you need anything?
Can I have the gavel?
I can't, I don't know what they have. And I says, do you need anything? He says, yeah, my work boots are at it. Oh, and he says, I need new work boots. And just started.
Oh, it's gonna, it's coming all together, yeah.
And I said, okay. I says, what time you on, something told me. I said, okay.
Yeah.
I says, anything else? He says, I could use two pairs of leadbacks, and I said, jeans.
That's a lot of money you're talking.
When I got done, I bought him two, a pair of cowboy boots, two pairs of beard jeans, a shirt, socks. Four hundred dollars.
Yeah, 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 I was gonna say.
Yeah, but, but.
Yes. Yeah, it is. But it works for you, you have a horse.
Well, I heard the other day that Costco has a banana cream pie that's three pounds.
She's best friend.
I love banana cream pie, I'm still waiting, hell, I'm finding that.
I saw it, I went to Texas to go to school, but I burned it, it was a scholarship, and he said, these were college and.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He really wanted to go to, but he couldn't afford it, and he didn't get there. So, he kind of started going around with his kids every part year. And as long and downer gets older, it's like, my daughter's.
Yeah, that's hard as an adult, probably.
Well, he's eighteen. Yeah, and I think if you.
Yes.
I love it. Welcome to the May twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four council meeting. Please rise for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all. We have an agenda before us to be approved.
Second.
We have a, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for the tw- May twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We have minutes of the May fourteenth meeting for approval.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes for May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? We have consent calendar for May, from May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four through May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, consisting of payroll EFTs in the amount of sixty-three thousand, seven hundred, eighty-one dollars and eighty-two cents. Claims checks, three-two, three-eight-six through three-two, four-zero-two in the amount of ten thousand, seven hundred, sixty-four dollars and forty-three cents. For a grand total of seventy-four thousand, five hundred, forty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. There are no liquor or ca- liquor cannabis licenses.
No approval. Second.
It's been moved in a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Appo- oppose? We have no executive session, no presentations, public comment. Number one, is, if there's anyone in the audience that'd like to make public comment, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Can't hear you.
I don't see anybody that wants, okay? Moving on, proclamations. We have none, old business, none, new business, park master plan. Jennifer, I mean Jen?
Um, so as you all know, we've held a couple of public, um, comment meetings for input for the new park master plan. This is something we have to do, I believe, every five years. I know it's been since, this one's very outdated. Has it been since two thousand seventeen? Is that crazy? Yeah.
That's when it was.
Um, so essentially this one, the only real major changes are we added all the updated areas of the park. You know, we have some new paths that go through there, and then this has our new land and our hopeful future development of the trail system up there. Um, and then, you know, the pool renovation, and then we have a few more goals that we really hope to see come to fruition at the pool, like, such as the parking lot and maybe a roundabout for emergency vehicles or school buses to drop off up there. Um, pavement, handicap parking, uh, maybe a gazebo in the future, you know, all that stuff's included. This is all in your packet if you have questions, but, um, we've looked it over a lot. It's been through everyone. Anyone have any questions? I'm not the park person, but, um.
No approval.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the master, park master plan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? We, next we have the stone carver lease termination.
And as you all know, the stone carvers have been renting the old public works facility, uh, over on Sussex. I wanted to call that Wickman, but it's not. Uh, they have asked to get out of the lease. They cannot do what they wanted to do to the building to make it work for what they were intending it to be for. So, uh, we have in our terms a sixty-day notice, but they would like to just do it in thirty days and, um, get out, so. We were both in agreeance not to hold them there. If anyone has any questions on that?
I need them all, I really.
I, I spoke with the, uh, Bill Lunker there, president of the Stone Carvers Union, and, and he's, he has some disappointment and frustration that they were never able to use the building as it was presented to them.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's not zoned commercial, so they can't hold classes there and.
Not. It's not so much the zoning, you know, we could, we could work with the planning commission to, to come up with something there. It's more that the building, it's a pole building. And to make it suitable for human habitation and meet life safety codes and the rest, it, you may as well tear it down and build something new.
Yeah. Yep.
So, um, I guess the agreement's been for, uh, trading stonework around the city in, in lieu of rent. Um, and I'm not sure where that all stands.
Yeah.
Oh, they're gonna use the, their present facilities for it, yeah, that's all.
No approval.
But I'm, I'm hoping, well, I'm not done, but, you know, we, everyone I've spoken to about the stone carvers really supports them. They're, they're.
Second.
Yeah, we love them.
Asset of the town. They're, they are the town, they're the history of the town going back. And, uh, anything we can do to support that and help them in their hunt for a new home that's here in Tenino and, and they can do classes and do demonstrations for the tourists we hope to attract and, and the rest. Um, and I don't have ideas, I don't know where that stands right now.
The last I heard, they are working with the quarry on the, um, west end of town to hopefully get some funding to work over there.
They do have a tent that allows them to get going with the classes, but the grant that they got from the state, some eighty thousand dollars to, to run these uh, uh, classes and rehabilitate the building, they can't do that until they actually have an address and a, a site.
Well, they're using, they've been using the, the existing one. They really have.
The shed?
I'm down there all the time, and they are training people in there, so.
Yes, but they've got a, a big pot of money to develop the stone carving presence in town, and until they can find a spot, um, it's just gonna be whatever they can, the one or two people in their shed or, or something out in the weeds temporarily.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah.
I, I just wanna state my support for them and, and.
Yeah, we absolutely support them as well, and it's unfortunate, I think. This isn't like, I don't want anyone to think we're kicking them out of our building either. This, they came, they approached us that they would like to get out of the lease, so.
No, this is their choice, yeah. Okay. It's been moved, is, do I have a second?
Yeah, a second.
It's been moved and seconded to, um.
Stone carvers.
The stone carvers lease termination. Is there any question, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? State auditor's engagement letter.
Um, I think I already explained this to you guys. This is just a compliance examination through the state auditor's office. Um, basically, the timeline, they're hoping to be done and have a report for us by July. Uh, they're, you know, kicking off this week. They'll be in city hall this Friday. Any questions?
How much are they charging us?
Uh, I believe it's eleven thousand dollars.
As if they don't get enough tax dollars to do this stuff. I'll get off them a soapbox about it.
Well, that's not what we're talking about, Mr. O'Callaghan.
Well, you can do that when I call for a discussion, John. I call for an, a motion to accept, uh, approve the.
Second.
Just been a motion to approve, the motion seconded to approve the S A O letter. Is there any discussion?
I, I, I won't bring up how.
Is your microphone on?
Yes.
Okay, just checking.
Okay, I, I won't bring up how we already paid the state boatloads of money for them to come and do this stuff. They might have turned around and charged everybody again for it. That's double taxation, but I won't bring that up.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Now, we have resolution. Resolution number two zero two four dash zero two. The res- a resolution of the city of Tenino, Washington declaring certain city weapon to be surplus and of no further use to the city and authorizing the sale and disposition thereof. Whereas the city of Tenino, Washington is authorized pursuant Washington law to dispose of a weapon owned by the city by sale, and whereas the city council of the city of Tenino, Washington considers a described weapon below owned by the city to be surplus and of no further use to the city. And whereas the city counts, city council of the city of Tenino, Washington considers a sale of the described we- weapon below to be the best interest of the citizens and patrons of the city. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Tenino, Washington do resolve as follows. The city of Tenino, Washington. The city of Tenino, Washington does declare the following described weapon plat- surplus and of no further use to the city. Glock seventeen generation five MOS serial number B H S L four zero four. The mayor of the city of Tenino, Washington shall be, and he hereby is authorized to sell this weapon in a commercially reasonably, reasonable manner as determined by the mayor or his designate. Section three, the buyer of the aforementioned weapon will sign a release of liability as a condition to tran- of transfer of ownership from the city to the buyer. Okay, adopted by the city council of the city of Tenino and approved by the mayor at a regularly scheduled open meeting thereof this twenty-eighth day of May, two thousand twenty-four.
No approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution two zero two four dash zero two. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We have an ordinance. This is the second reading of ordinance nine thirty. The ordinance is the city county, city council of the city of Tenino amending the Tenino municipal code within the public semi-public zoning district. Whereas the city of Tenino is a code city and is authorized by R C W thirty-five A dot six-three, planning and zoning in the code cities to set development standards, and I'm not gonna read the whole thing because it was read the first time. Therefore, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Tenino as follows. And then it goes on to explain the sections. Do I have a, a motion?
All right, move through approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the second and final reading of, uh, ordinance nine thirty. Is there any discussion?
Just a reminder to everyone that, that this is for the ag park and the meat processing that we hope to do there, and. An example that the city can change codes and zoning to, to meet the needs of, of agricultural and stone carving and, and whatever, and the city and the can, uh, planning commission are responsive to the needs of the city as it evolves over time to, to. Keep us all within the law and get us where we all need to go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Adam, for commission's helping that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appo- oppose?
Aye.
You oppose?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, I think that's it, um. Public comments number two. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to make public comment, please do so. State your name and address. Okay, nobody? Announcements. Saturday night, five to nine at the Kodiak Room, we are having the Splash Bash for the Tenino Quarry Pool. It's going to be fun, 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 roaring twenties. It's gonna be a lot of people there. We're all really excited, a lot of different things to do, live auction, silent auction, we've got a couple of games that we're playing, there's a, a prize for best costume, so. Hope to see everybody there. It's gonna be fun. I know John's coming. I know that Jeff's coming. Jason, did you talk your wife into, I know you do.
You roped in my wife, I have no choice at this point.
How about you, Jason? Did you talk your wife into it?
No, you didn't talk to my wife, so.
I should have talked to your wife. That's, that's it, though, next time. You're in trouble now. Okay.
Also an event on the eighth, the following Saturday, is our stone carving event where our local, uh, chapter is, or, or organization is inviting stone carvers from all over Washington.
There's about ten coming. They're from the Washington Stone Carvers Association, and it's in conjunction with the opening of our Tenino Arts Market on the same street. Oh, that's something I need to talk to you about, too. Uh, the whole street is going to be closed off. And, um, they're gonna have all kinds of things going on.
That's gonna be really exciting, seeing the artisans and artists.
I won't be able to be there. My great-grandson's graduating from high school, and I told him his priorities were all messed up, but he wouldn't listen, so.
That's what I told my daughter, graduating from college.
Okay, meeting adjourned.